Okay. This is a town of Andover, a special time meeting for Thursday, August 1st. Electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings at the town of Andover are hereby notified that a special time meeting will be held in the town office building beauty room. And our first order of business is to choose a moderator for said meeting. Any nominations? Mount McLawley. Do we have a second for Mount McLawley? Second over there, Bob Hamburger. Right, so Don Denry nominated. All those in favor? Any other? McLawley, all ears.
I have number two to see if the town will approve the received grant of eighty-three thousand dollars for fiscal year 2024-2025 in the Energy Department of Energy and Environmental Protection recreational trails program requiring a town match of twenty-one thousand dollars from the town multi-use building fund to fund the design of a pathway to be the municipal complex in the Hawthorne River Trail through town on land. At this point, going to turn it over to Eric Peterson for his presentation.
All right, folks, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna, Jeff says I have four minutes to do this, so I will go quickly. Probably take more than four. Okay, so our chart requires us to join a special meeting anytime we as a town accept a grant that's, the grant is more than twenty-five hundred dollars and there's any town contribution, even public works doing a little work, work, um, that has to go to town meetings. So that's what we're here for. So I applied for an EDP rep trail grant this spring. The goal of this was to design an improved Percy Cook Trail. So, uh, we, as many of you know, last year we got a legislative appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars to figure out where the trails should go and how it should work here. Um, so out of that came the desire for two pathways. One going downward, 316 and connecting to the rail trail, and a second one going through down property, which combined make about a two-mile loop. So, uh, we've tried to fund both of them with different mechanisms. We went through a program called Lotser to fund the pathway down Route 316. We did get a $2.9 million Lotser grant for the construction of that. And that is in final design right now. In fact, you might have seen the guys surveying on Route 316. Still gonna be a few years out. Still a lot more outreach to the homeowners that needs to happen. Finalized design, work with DOT, back to the homeowners. So it's not happening instantaneously. The second half of this was a pathway that runs back through town property and also connects through the trail. So we applied to DEP, uh, for the design funding. And the reason I did that was in, in the last four or five funding segments, DEP has been much more likely to fund design studies and then a year or two later fund construction. So that's the route we took with that. This is the fourth time I've applied to this program for funding and the first time we got it. So DEP has committed eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars toward the design. The town matches twenty-one thousand, which will come from the multi-use building fund. So it won't be additional taxation. It's money we've already put away, uh, you know, for construction projects. So this is just kind of a summary of that for the Percy Cook Trail. The study, we completed the initial study using a hundred percent legislative grant funding. Um, now we have the design permitting, uh, you know, and so we're funding that eighty percent with state rep trail grant and twenty percent from the town. Um, we're looking to get the study going sometime middle to end of August. We've already gone to RFP for the contractor that's for the engineering firm that's doing the design for both this part and this part. So we don't need to re-go out to RFP. And the location is the area between here and the Hawthorne River Trail. I'll show you map in a second. So here's a breakdown of the cost estimate. The top part is everything we're doing now. Um, so the bottom half is just a feel, you know, what over-the-world estimate for the actual construction. So this would be, if we ever got actually built, would be somewhere around a million-dollar project. And obviously, we're never gonna do that unless we have that funding. So, uh, this is the overall plan. Let me zoom in on that. This is what we're talking about. So here, we're in the lower corner where it says community center. And the red line is the existing outline of the Percy Cook Trail, which follows the old logging trail for the last time that property got logged. The problem is, if you sell those little lines up there, that's really steep contour. So the town hall is about three hundred and eighty feet in elevation. It rises up to about four hundred and ninety feet, and then it drops back down to about three hundred and thirty feet. So there's a lot of up and a lot of down there. So the hard part has been coming up with the design, which gets down below the ten percent grade level so that it's actually walkable and bikeable and, you know, it meets current. You know, so we done an initial look at this using radar data and the existing mapping that the town has. And the next stage is to go back there and to survey it, you know, do core samples of the earth so you know what you're looking at and design the actual pathway. So that's what this grant is designed to do, is get us up to a final design to how they made that route go through. And if we go back one slide, you can see in green, that is roughly the path that will be taken by the, uh, second trail that will run down 316. So you can see from where we are here, that gives you roughly a two-foot, two-mile loop trail from this location where you don't have to worry about cars other than a little bit on cider mill road. Uh, so that is basically what we're applying to do. Um, and obviously, it takes a town meeting to approve that funding. So at this point, I know I went through that pretty quick, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you want.
This is fighting against school property. What was this, right, the top of our trail?
So the top of the trail will run roughly, it will stay on, it will stay off the parcel that's quote-unquote school property, but it will run fairly close to it.
Yes. So is there any dissent? Well, when is the school board set on this sort of, this super pen?
I didn't ask.
So the Percy Cook is the one that goes off the backside of your school? It's not the one that goes down 316, you're other connect?
Correct. Correct. The Percy Cook is the one that goes back through.
Which color is it?
So it's the red. It's the red going to the purple. The purple is the revised, the red is the existing trail. The purple is what you have to do if you want to make it great and make it something that's, you know, walkable. If any of you have walked up that from the rail trail, you'll notice that's an extremely tough walk, uh, to make, you know, and impossible on a bike of any sort.
Court, do a problem, Mr. Brown. The question here is, will this design study include what I call cost-benefit analysis? You were talking about a project on order one mil, and I'd like to have some estimates on, you know, common use services on a daily, monthly, seasonal basis. And I would hope that that would be part of the, uh, design process to get that information to part of the public, uh, outreach. Seventh question is, what provision for public input in the design process is envisioned?
So, one of the things that is an absolute requirement for DEP funding is public engagement. So there will be, uh, multiple meetings on this and a public hearing on this prior to coming up with a final design.
Yeah, the red, is that currently a trail or is that just a proposed trail?
Well, it's...
A wooded-in...
It's a trail that we keep walkable. Okay? And it's, it's marginally marked, it's walkable until you get to the steep section now. It's not really ridable from, you know, the last, uh, third of a mile basically is, is not really ridable. It's partially walkable, um, but not ridable in its current state. It was the old logging road for when they logged this property.
So that's there now, so hopefully, um, the hundred thousand dollars goes to fund and design for the, the purple area or the...
Well, but there's also, if you see the light blue, those are, those are areas that are wetlands, so there's gonna have to be some provision. When you're logging a road, you can be less sensitive to wetlands than you have to be if you're putting a permanent trail. So there's a bunch of design in the other spots. And there will also be a fair bit of design when we get up into this area, because part of the, the issue we ran into is we developed a secondary path to get to the Percy Cook Trail from here, so we can prevent people from having to cross school property when the Percy Cook Trail was originally developed, which is going back maybe eight or nine years. And one of the issues that we had with that is that this section, especially in years like this, is extremely wet. So even though we have permission from the gas line to cross in a secondary spot, that would, this part here would need to be improved too, because there is some, some definite wetlands crossings and wetlands impacts there. So that's a big part of the, there's a very big wetlands design component to this, to the design parts.
So you're saying the project itself, if it ever came off the round, would be over a million dollars?
Uh, if we paved the whole thing, yes. But, you know, any one-mile paving project these days is, you know...
Sure.
So, so you said nine hundred and fifty thousand may be required for construction is the current estimate?
Yeah.
Was that what they gave you? So you said maybe about two years from now, we might be able to apply for grant money? Is that right?
Sure.
And is that gonna also require about a twenty, twenty-five percent contribution from the town?
So it depends. I mean, my goal would be another Lotser grant. Part of the reason why I've done it this way is, and the reason why we went after a legislative grant in the first place is it's often harder to get design money than it is to get actual construction money. Once you've got essentially what they call a shovel-ready project, where you have an engineering design that, you know, the, especially the DOT has blessed, it is easier than to actually fund the construction. So which is exactly what we did in 316. We went after congressional or legislative money first. Used the legislative money for a study in preliminary design. Went and applied to Lotser, got the Lotser funding, um, in the first go-around, which was pretty cool. And, um, so that project, you know, the town may have twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars of skin in the game by the time we develop it, but the state will have about three million. So we funded almost the whole cost of this. My goal is to do the same thing with this, but I can't guarantee it. And obviously, if I'm standing up here in a couple of years asking you for two hundred thousand dollars, that's a much bigger ask for the town, and I recognize that.
Will Lotser fund something up to that amount, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only, my only hesitation with Lotser is that, uh, right now, the pipeline for Lotser funding is filled. I have at least another five or six years. So I don't know when they're gonna have another Lotser grant funding round available to us. Um, so that's kind of where I'm going with it.
I realize it hasn't been entirely designed. Carri function, uh, here and over. Hasn't been entirely designed. What's the width you're envisioning? You know, like, two people walking abreast?
Yeah, this will likely be a ten-foot, I mean, kind of the, the DOT, federal DOT standard for multi-use paths is a ten-foot wide path.
And the cabin?
Say again?
And you're planning on pavement, the cabin or something?
Um, so the steep part will absolutely be paved. The rest of it could be stone dust and it could be paved. It's gonna kind of depend on what people want. I don't have any pre, I like riding gravel, so I'd be just as happy making it stone dust. But there is more erosion, you know, maintenance costs are slightly higher with gravel than with pavement.
Hi, Doris Monal, 33 Center Road. As a person born with disabilities and it's gonna be crossing in front of my house and my children's house, I'm concerned about the three foot, uh, that you mentioned, um, that's, that's up to code with the state and guideline, but for a wheelchair accessibility, for accessibility walking, it's a hazardous trail as it is right now. I can't even, um, leave my driveway because on cider mill road, people just rip, zip right through it, right now as it is. Um, so there are no, um, uh, stops on the road to prevent, to slow down. So with this trail and it not being all paved, how are, is the town going to make sure and sure that it's not hazardous, that it's accessible to all of us, um, and that it's, it's, it's a safe, a safe place to, to walk or to ride or have a wheelchair accessibility?
So first of all, it will be, unlike cider mill road, it will be one hundred percent, um, non-motorized traffic. So, so, you know, you won't have to worry about the automobile component. So the upper part, the part from the community center up past where it says views, and it starts to go into the switchback, that you can make a really mild grade. So, you know, if you chose to pave it, that whole section can be fully ADA compliant. Where we get into this deep section just simply because, you know, you have a hundred and fifty feet of elevation gain and you have it in about a third of a mile, no set of switchbacks will make that fully, uh, ADA accessible. Um, and because there's no road there, you can't apply PROE. So the majority of this will be ADA accessible, but I, I'm not saying the whole thing will. Sorry. Um, the, the end part where it starts going down, this deep part, will not be. I wish we could figure out how to design it so that it would be, but we just, we don't own enough land there and enough way to make switchbacks to bring the grade down. Okay?
Uh, Marce, Gunston, Dillon, 389 Lake Road. Why do we need this? Do we know how many people think they want to use this? I mean, if they walk to the trail, anyway, this parking lot's they've developed all the way along the way. Why do we think we need improvement community center to use this path?
So my answer to that is two-fold. Um, first, that was something that was identified in the last plan of conservation and development. That was one of the goals, which was linkage from this, the municipal complex, to the rail trail, and then on to the ball fields, um, down below. So that's one component. And the second thing is, I think, in this day and age, anything you can do to promote healthy activity in walking and biking is worthwhile for a community. And if you look at where the youngest generation of people are moving to, you know, there's a, there is a, a large movement of people towards areas that are walkable and bikeable. Um, and if we're gonna attract people, we're gonna attract young families, that's got part of the mix that we do as a town.
But we really don't want to attract people because of taxes most of the time, and the school says no. And it's been a cost of a hundred thousand now, and maybe up to a billion a lot, by the time we build it. All the way to the front.
Also, of course, projects are expensive. There's nothing you're doing today that's inexpensive.
So the red trail that we'll meet at tonight with the paint attached to it, that goes down to the rail trail, picking it up near the museum?
Uh, no. The museum is closer to where the green trail intersects. In fact, the green trail intersects, the, the green pathway intersects fairly close to where the museum is.
Okay. And is that green trail, uh, the second phase of this? Like, tonight, we're here for eighty-three thousand, approval on this, the twenty-one because of the red trail?
So, correct. There, both of those trails, both of those pathways are proceeding down different funding. There are different stages and there are different funding, but both of those grants were gotten. We proposed in both cases doing the opposite one to make it a loser. So we wrote that into both grants, that one of the objectives of this was a completely loser.
What was the yellow, the yellow?
The yellow is the existing hot river state, state park.
Okay.
Many are state parks.
The existing rail trail.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I also wonder if we really need this. We've got lots of bike trails already. We've seen them. This is a potential boondoggle of money. And we're gonna be seeing in the next couple of years, in this town, with the increase in the border bed budget, the school attendance. Um, twenty thousand, it's not that much, but two hundred thousand would be. This is a, it's the step in, in that direction, so I'm, I'm not sure we really need this.
Sure.
Scott, so yeah, 168 Dawson Hill Road. The money you said is gonna come from, uh, against the building fund.
Correct.
I am assuming that what we talked about here and there, I don't really, you know, that we're gonna have kitchen to that as soon as we are clear to do it, which means, you know, past a certain threshold after it's occupied and whatever, but does that cut into that?
Uh, it is not. Um, that's part of the reason, well, this is one of the reasons why we've been funding the multi-use building fund on an ongoing basis. We did put fifty thousand dollars into that in this budget cycle, so we have enough to cover that. Um, the other thing we can keep in mind is that we currently have a congressional request for funding that made it through the Senate Appropriations Committee, as of two days ago. Um, that will go a long way towards funding the second phase of what we're doing with the community center. So what I'm trying to do is finish the community center and the generator for the, for the three-building complex out of mostly federal funds. So I'm actually not using a lot of the multi-use building fund for that. No guarantees I'm gonna get it. Still gotta go through, but, you know, it made it out of the, the state funding mechanism and it made it through the Senate Appropriations Committee, so I think it has a reasonable chance of being funded.
Eric? I just have a real quick one. Is there a list that we can look at anywhere that has a list of outstanding projects and their cost? So at least we know when people are saying, well, this could be, we, we know what we're looking at future for costs of...
I mean, I have a list. I have not published that list, but no reason we can.
Okay.
Nothing secret, that's for sure.
Uh, Bob Hamburger, Shawty Mill Road. I just want to point out that as a town, we really have three town centers. We have the municipal town center here. We have the historic town center, which is where the railroad station was on Center Street. And we have the athletic town center over where the fields are. And we have very little to connect them so that somebody can walk or ride in between. So from my perspective, anything that we can do to integrate this town so that those town centers can be easily traversed by somebody on a bike of foot is a good idea.
Sure.
Jeff Ballard, Lake Road. Now, when do you expect to have a certificate of occupancy on the senior's community center?
Uh, last week.
Last week? Now, once you get that certificate of occupancy, doesn't that close the door on million-dollar budget?
No. It's still part of the, I mean, the punch list and the final fees to the contract are all fitting under that.
If, uh, if we don't mind, can we keep it to the issues related to this grant and this application, because that's what we're here for initially in this town meeting?
Yeah, my point being is that after a period of time, when that million-dollar obligation is done, maybe the twenty-one thousand dollars that the town is putting into this would be better spent on the senior center, community center. Because that's my opinion.
Okay?
Sure.
I just want to remind everybody that there was recently a death on Route 316. A guy was on a motor, on a bicycle. And, um, so as someone who rides bicycle would love to utilize these trails, I think it's a win-win. I mean, I applaud Eric for doing this work and getting this grant and moving our town forward like all the other towns are getting, you know, with trails that goes through the town so that they can go to different areas.
That was a heater, no?
Sorry?
That was a heater, not the under...
Yes, it was on 316, though. And our roads, you know, when you try to go down Lake Road, which would, would, um, you could avoid it if you had that trail, a lot of times, we try to go down Lake Road to the Dollar General down there, and that's a dangerous road.
Are you looking for a motion? Please. Got to look at specific motions with their order.
You can make a motion to vote on this.
Okay. Well, I'm going to be going on this proposal.
Okay.
Who's second?
Second.
Captain Lawley. Okay. Motion, and then the second. He came in to check in, he were given a paper ballot. They have to know it's law. And if you bar the ballot, they'll come around with ballot logs and get up ballots.
Okay, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing to receive public input on proposed revisions of the Charter of the Town of Andover, sent forth to the draft report of the Charter revision commission. We're now going to receive public input. Who wants to go first? Don Denry, over first.
So I do not support the review on this new charter revision. I, I will oppose it as best I'm able. In particular, section 105H, the minor ordinance, section 402A, the general powers of the Board of Selectmen, and section 301A, which is again with the ordinance, and in section 702, which is the town clerk, uh, up on my list. Section 105 is the minor ordinance. The elimination of this section removes, obviously, the public hearing. It gives the power to enact all ordinances to the Board of Selectmen. I view this as an assault on our democracy by taking away the public views, taking away our decision-making, giving it to five people. This section should be restored to its original content, governed by the people, for the people. Two, section 402 labeled general powers and duties. The word powers should be removed. We are in power. We're the taxpayer, we're the citizens, we're the voters. We should have the power. Section AMV should be restored to their original text. The power needs to remain with the people, the taxpayers and citizens of Andover, not the five selectmen. I've attended almost every town budget meeting since I've moved here thirty years ago. In most public hearings, I support the current process. It does not need to be fixed. Attendance can be, can vary depending on the issues, but those who make the effort to come to the meetings know that they have an opportunity to speak on a particular ordinance or a particular town budget, why not? Take a breath. Tom Clerk, this has always been an elected position, and I feel strongly it should be laid that way. The town has been blessed with more... The town has been blessed with Marge and Carol. They've got a four-year appointed position, but the current five selectmen is unwarranted, not necessary. And I would truly like to know why the charter revision or and ordinance will stick that easy change. I believe that the tax collector and successor are appointed, are appointed as well. But I don't see that they have to be reappointed for years. Is that correct for a selectman? Do you, you know that? Can you say that?
I, I can say what the charter revision is trying to do is trying to make the town clerk's position more like a town administrator's position. Because in the situation where you're voting for an individual such as Carol Lee, we know what we're getting.
Sure.
But the issue is when Carol leaves us. What are we doing?
Well, I'm, I'm confident that when Carol reaches a mandatory retirement age of eighty. Qualified people will step forward. The charter revision needs to be revisited. This stands as a power grab and our, how our town is operated for decades. We should have a voice and a vote on all town ordinances and they should be presented at a public hearing. The board of selectmen does not have any more power than it already has. Our town clerk position should remain the elected position. Thank you.
All right, so, um, most of you know us, know that it's very, very rare that Don Denver and I agree on anything.
Pigs are flying.
Yeah, pigs are flying, exactly. Um, so, uh, I, I have pretty much the same complaints, same objections.
Scott, can you speak?
Oh, sorry, Scott Sawyer, Boston Hill Road. So I have pretty much the same objections. Um, I think it's a power grab. I think that we need to keep the democracy in town, the small-town town meeting style democracy. If we lose it, we're never going back. I think it's been a, it's not been perfect. It's, it's messy, it's ugly, but it's important. Um, and I feel the same about Carol's position. I also, at the last hearing, brought up a bunch of technical things about the charter. And a couple of them got changed, but some of them are still there. So this is, I think, a massive charter. There's typos, there's, um, they, they got the thing, um, you mentioned, uh, one oh five H. Well, that's, this, one oh five is the section on definitions. And they've got something there that's totally not a definition. Um, the, I think it's a hurry process. I think that was part of the problem. I've got a bunch of others. Um, I'll give you guys copies of my notes again. Um, what else? In, in one section, we have, it says something like, "The board of selectmen shall have legislative authority for all matters not specifically enumerated herein after section three oh four." Including but not limited to all those powers, whatever. So basically, we're saying, we're referring to this other section, and we're saying we have those, but the section no longer applies, but we're going to keep the section there. So they fixed it this time by taking out that section altogether. So now we have language that says that we're referring to this section that doesn't even exist. So I, and I think, I, I think it's a sign of a hurry process. Um, I wonder why it was done during summertime, if they thought there was less chance of people showing up and responding, or if it was just as, as they said. Um, you know, this needs to be done for, so we can get it on a presidential ballot. Um, which, which is a legitimate thing, but I think we should have started it much earlier if that was a concern. And a couple of other, there's several other, um, minor things. They fixed the other one that really worried me where they tried to assert authority over the local school board's grants. Um, that's, that's been removed and I'm glad to see that. But awful lot of stuff hasn't been removed and an awful lot of stuff is just power grabbing is going to say enough. That's, there's my notes. Um, I, I think that we should, as, I think we should, the board should table this or only do the most controversial things, changing the dates of votes, things like that. Bring that to referendum, that's fine. Um, and then try this again with more time and with, with, with. Okay, thank you.
These two guys are hard-hatched problems. I'm Jerry Trumay, I live at Eightwood, far and away. Um, I'm here for a reason, see? I want to share my thoughts with you about the Charter Revision Commission's recommendation for change in our town charter. And also, I'm learning things from listening to other people here. Anytime I go to a town meeting that involves spending of money, approving this, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar lawnmower, whatever, I've learned by listening to other people. I learned by the questions you ask and the answers you get. Um, so that's why I'm here. And I wrote this out for myself, I'm agglominate. Uh, sometimes change is necessary. I think you're being proactive to want to come up with a plan, what happened to Carol Lee. She is, she's not an easy person to replace. She loves this town. She gives her heart and soul into it. And it's good that she's going to get ready for when she wants to retire. You're not, you're not going to deny her that. So I would have to answer, what I would start with is talking to Carol Lee. They say, Carol, how would you go about it? And, and interview other towns and go ahead and answer for the towns. It's, it's worked out. So sometimes change is necessary, but many times it's not. Our budget procedures, I think, work well. You've got a framework in place, why change if it doesn't need to be changed? You've probably heard it many times, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Uh, changes come with their, uh, changes come with their own sets of pros and cons. In order to determine the impact of the changes, time to analyze it is necessary. As a resident, I feel as though the town flew through this charter revision commission and they were rushed. Rush to have something to produce quickly so that it could meet the November election. People need time to analyze things and come up with, what, how do I feel about this? Um, we have to process those changes and we have to think about the implications of them. And that's why I like being here with you tonight, because I'm learning a lot of things from other people. And Andover, the town meeting is our legislative bottom. Our residents attend town meetings and vote. We vote Carol. It doesn't matter whether I say yes and everybody says no, or somebody says no and everybody says yes. That doesn't matter. What matters is I'm getting a chance to explore and put myself in other people's places, in other people's shoes. I believe that any time you call for a town meeting, make a decision, or put an item out to referendum, town residents are much closer to being in control of what they want for their town. People have had the chance to share their thoughts and ideas. I'd rather have a vote of fifty to seventy-five residents taken at a town meeting as opposed to, the no professor you win, whether it is your board, as opposed to having the voice of just five select persons. As the residents think about the revisions suggested by the Charter Review Commission, they should ask themselves this question. How does this recommended change impact my ability to have a say in my local government? Is this change needed? What are the advantages of this change? And what are the disadvantages? That being said, we'd like to thank all the individuals who worked tirelessly on the Charter Revision Commission, who volunteered your time for many hours to serve the Andover community in this way. To that, I'm truly thankful.
Hi, I'm Bob Hamburger, I'm on Shawty Mill Road. Um, I volunteered and served on the Charter Review Commission. And in fact, I was flattered that they chose me to chair the commission. So I wanted to just provide a little bit of insight. I have nothing prepared. I didn't really expect to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to say a few things just to give a little bit of insight onto how we, how we put all of this together. Um, as chair, I tried as much as possible to be as nonpartisan as possible. I didn't want to steer the outcome. I just wanted to try to shepherd the process and let the process work as it's designed. We had seven members, my vote was just one of them. And as I said, I tried to stay as, as center of the road and neutral as possible. I agree that when things don't need to be changed, they shouldn't be changed. Um, as far as the process being rushed, you should know that the initial list of items that we had was almost twice as long as the list that we actually decided to deliberate upon. Some things we decided were too complex, were not important enough, and that we didn't have time to be able to give them any type of appropriate consideration. And so the answer to those was, we'll talk about those in the next cycle. Um, of the things that we, that we did settle on, the one thing that I want to give a little bit more insight into is Carol and the town clerk. Uh, as, as Jeff mentioned, um, we wanted, we, we know that, that she is a very strong candidate, that, that she has served the town tirelessly. Eventually, she, she's going to retire. Um, one of the big advantages of having an appointed position like, like Eric's is that we don't, we aren't restricted to someone who lives here in town. And one of the things that we've seen time again with the various boards and commissions that we have in town is that we have trouble finding people who are qualified and willing and able. And that one change of making it appointed versus elected allows us to expand where we can look. And I think that's, that's an important distinction. Um, there's a lot of other things I could talk about if I was prepared, but I just wanted to add those things to the conversation. Thanks.
So, so Bob, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Now, the Charter Revision Committee, is it accurate to say that one of the things on their agenda initially was to eliminate the town meeting?
No.
No?
No.
That's us.
That, that.
Conspiracy theory.
Yes, no. That subject, as you have just framed it, never came up.
Never came up?
Never came up. To eliminate the town meeting. No, absolutely not.
All right.
Okay. Now, as you, as you pointed out, there are certain parts of the process where it would be, where we're proposing that it not be included as it is included then. But the elimination of the town meeting in its entirety, no, absolutely, was never discussed in any context.
So you're just going to like, you can talk to all people, turn their backs on it?
Yes, yes. In the sake, for the sake of efficiency in a lot of cases. That's how it was framed.
Saving money then? Efficiency saving money? Two terms I hear.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's probably a fair, fair way to, to frame it, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm believing it's okay. It's not, we'll still fix it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? While I'm up here.
Hi, Liz Logich, Cleveland Road.
Yes.
About your question about the town meeting, I think it's not the town meeting that was focused being eliminated, it's the vote at the town meeting. Is that correct? Like, for the town, people that show up at that town meeting to vote in support of the budget, is that correct?
The town meeting will continue in the exact same way it can. You can reduce the budget. You get to ask any questions and you get to vote on budget reductions. We're not voting to move the budget forward or against. It's not an up or down. What it is, is you make decisions to reduce the budget and then that budget goes directly to referendum. So right now, the way that the town meeting works is the forty or fifty people that show up here come to a town meeting and we all raise our hand and talk about how our budget's too high. And then we have the potential to sit there and make a motion to lower the budget item. Those are either accepted or rejected. And at the end of the meeting, we vote the budget up or down, yes or no. And then at a yes or no vote, it goes to referendum. The only thing that we're objecting to do, which goes into all of the other issues that we want to address, is consolidating the budget referendum date with the RAM date. So we go to a long-time referendum to vote both on RAM and the town budget at the same time. The first, it can fail. The RAM budget can fail or the town budget can fail. And then we have to go through the process again. But the only thing that we sat there and did from a financial standpoint, other than we did make adjustments to, uh, raise or, uh, raise some of the thresholds that were required. Like, right now, we have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar threshold on a town grant that Eric can, in the current charter, we're not even supposed to apply for a grant unless we go to a town meeting. It's incredibly inefficient. So what we did is, is there's percentages up and downs, some downs and ups, but everything goes to a referendum.
Thank you. Thank you.
With, with the exception of, um, ordinances, that, that's a change. I mean, I know there's a petition process. We're, we're.
Petition process, which you can force anything to a referendum. The board of selectmen is not an, an uncoordinated organization that's going to make these, these ordinances where you feel that you're, if you disagree with an ordinance, it's easier to change and to get the ordinance out of a referendum battle than it is to get everybody organized to come to a meeting and sit here. It's fifty signatures. It's not a lot. You know, so if we read it, it's, it's an efficiency issue. It has nothing to do with power or attempting to, to exert the authority of voting. Order will still vote on it if they choose to.
Thank you.
I, I will just read you right now. Okay, if, if this charter revision passes a referendum, okay? We will not be able to have significant input in a public hearing on any ordinance, okay? So our first selectmen can say, yeah, we'll collect fifty, fifty signatures. Or rather, help us fund with a public hearing where we've seen many ordinances at public hearings, most of them just breeze through. But we should be able to sit here, have them present it, and then go about it. We all want to go and collect fifty, fifty signatures? So we need to have a process that we've always had here for the last thirty or forty years that I've been here? I, I don't mind that. So the, the ordinance, okay, and then what, these, for the selectmen, want to be able to take over and enact ordinances. And then if you disagree, you've got to fight them with a petition, fifty signatures in the process. It's not just easy, it's not easy to do.
And then a court. What, what's there? Town attorney, Dennis O'Brien.
Yes, there has to be a public hearing for any ordinance, you know, board of selectmen is up. The difference is, it's not a town meeting, but they would hold a public hearing. So you have a public hearing, you have an opportunity to talk to them. You know, and if you don't trust them, fine, you know, do the town meeting. But frankly, you know, how many quarters do you have in town? Two thousand? How many people show up at a town meeting?
The payers, see, the payers. That depends on, uh.
Well, you had a voter out tonight, it's pretty much turned up. But still, still, you're allowing fifty people to make a decision.
Well, it's supposed to apply if you want to make a decision.
But they were elected by the, by the rest of the town, by the whole electorate. It's, it's a difference between representative government and town meeting.
It's just a town meeting. There's no public hearing to a referendum.
I won't, I'm going.
The issue is, the issue is that any ordinance that gets put up from the, the board of selectmen, any bill that puts up from, has that a public hearing, it has to go through the residents. Then it sits there and it goes through a different process than it currently does. That is what's being recommended. Anyone else? Anyone different who wants to?
Not different, just adding.
No, 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 no. Like, who's different has an individual.
We're sorry. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Don, can you come back in again and summarize?
Okay, I, um, I always preface my statements with, I'm, I'm, I've lived here three years. My concern was like, um, Scott said, oh, one oh five. Oh, Chair, Chair Bodywork.
Your name?
Susan Camerota, I apologize. Susan Camerota, senior driver, Justice Representative, I don't know what else I could pronounce. Um, Chair Bodywork, Chair Burger. Anyway, I view Scott, um, section one oh five definitions, that totally eliminated the definition for that phrase, minor ordinance. There was no such definition left, that mean, crossed everything off. And that's with the election of the town clerk. Again, two, three years, this is a different board than it was here three years ago, so elections work. So Carol, I don't think was forced to, we say, for herself for election. I don't think anybody was forced to not oppose her. I don't think anybody was forced to not oppose her every election. I, again, have a big, very long... So she could have voted out of that spot twenty years ago.
Five years ago?
Ten years ago. So what difference does it make if Carol leaves or Carol doesn't leave? Somebody in this town should be able to take over that position. Or we could just say, we can appoint the board. You maybe have better, smarter people outside of the town vandover to be on the board. That's what you're saying? Could be the better, smarter person that lives in the town vandover to be the town clerk. It's not very helpful, because that's my...
Thank you. So actually, I'll put them in.
And I have a question, because John can be really quick. What actually is the difference between the public, the public hearing and the town meeting? Can you vote in favor of this? It's the way it's coming off the floor.
You gotta, you gotta Catherine, the town meeting, you vote. Public hearing, you don't. Tell you what.
Okay, that's important. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Catherine McGoldy Lewis, Oak Farm, New York, Connecticut. All right, I have a couple of things. As far as the minor ordinance, section 105, again, I agree. I can't be vulnerable to a great dog in a league, but I do, I can't... I'll probably have to fade after this. Speak up. Okay. See, if that means people got it, that's fine. We never had, and we still do not have, a actual definition for what a minor ordinance is, and that's always bothered me. So I feel we should come up with a minor ordinance definition. And as far as having, changing it so that the board is allowed to amend or repeal whatever they want to do without actually having a town meeting does bother me. And it's not at all that I don't trust this board. I like everyone on this board, I trust everyone on this board. I just think that I don't want to take the authority of the town meeting away from its people, of the town. That's what it's the board, that is what we've always done in New England, and that's the way I'd like to keep it. And also, I think you should just, for a few things, like, I have an example that if you wanted to, if this board wanted to, I would think, change the taxes to be collected angular, a biangular, whatever. You could be able to do that. If it's not, you'd be able to do that, and we would not be able to go on. Is that correct?
That's not correct, because if we did that, you would get fifty signatures and then go to referendum, and you'd believe no.
If you get, if we are able to go...
You just can't get fifty signatures. You know you can get fifty signatures.
Most people don't even wanna knock door to door.
Why would you want ladies to do that?
Why do I want, make you wanna come here for a town meeting? We haven't done a tremendous number. There are like a lot of things that the boards in the last four years have wanted to do. We've held off because we have not wanted to drag everyone to a public meeting. That's why when we have had public meetings, we've had six or seven things on the agenda to go through.
I don't disagree with that, but I also, but I don't believe that it's right to ask the, change the petition process. Do something like that. Because I don't, I don't disagree that we shouldn't be handsome by the fact that you need, I'm wrongful of people. I agree with that. And I agree that we should progress and do different things, I really do. But I don't believe that the process should be, our choices now to walk door to door and get fifty signatures.
Okay.
Okay? The town clerk, I think the major difference between appointed and elected, and everybody should know this, is that as an appointed, no, you do not have to be a town resident, which is not necessarily a bad thing. Elected, you must be. I don't see the issue either way. I'm not opposed or, I just feel that either way, if we're going to do it correctly, then Carol would be the person that would have to at least make sure that next person is qualified and can do their job, and then have a, a...
Succession plan.
Space. You have a playing place and what her duties are, so that the next person can step in and go forward. Whether you're appointed or elected, you should be able to do that. The next name, and I don't have a lot. Again, I like with section 301 general, it's basically saying that you're taking away the authority from the end of a residence to vote in town meetings and giving it to the, whatever it's worth. And the, oh, again, right now, I think it is ridiculous that it's on the charter that you're only spending $2,500 or whatever. In this day and age, it's crazy. I don't know if I think it's okay to up it to $50,000 without a town meeting, but I do agree that $2,500 is bizarre. And, let's see if I have anything else I want to say, maybe. I think I might believe, believe it or not. Oh, the other thing was that on section B of finance and taxation, it says that the boards now, the agency boards, whatever, are going to be giving their, their budgets to the town manager rather than the board of finance. And I didn't understand why you would want to do that, so I'd like to have that explained, since I believe that's part of the good financing function and not town manager's function. And what does that do? How does that change the board finance? And doesn't that fall off of the wall? And I think that's it. I think that's it. Thank you.
Which way are you all on the matter of the town clerk? When someone's elected, the office of the town clerk, are there scanners or tests?
Certification.
Certifications, qualifications, before they can run? Like, how do you verify the person's, you know, qualified position before they run?
So my answer to that, you don't have to be qualified to run. Any elector in the town vandover can run for town clerk. There is a multi-year process to become a qualified town clerk, but you can hold the position without being a qualified town clerk. Ideally, if that's the case, the assistant clerk would be the qualified town clerk. The town can work with either a fully trained and certified assistant or a fully trained and certified town clerk. It's been a lot of years since we've had an assistant town clerk that was fully certified, certainly not in my tenure. So, in the current, assistant town clerk is not certified, nor is she an Andover resident. So even though she's probably the most qualified person to take Carol's job, she would be unable under her current system because she is not currently residing in Andover. Now, she could choose to move to Andover, but I don't think she intends to do that. So the advantage, there's advantages and disadvantages to both being elected and appointed. The advantage to being appointed is that you have a much wider pool to choose from. Instead of picking one person out of roughly 2,500 adults, you know, you have an entire state and you can poach a qualified assistant town clerk that's been certified from another town, which is what most larger municipalities do. Hasn't happened for one time, because we've been very fortunate that Carol has done this job for, you know, twenty-six or twenty-seven years. And it certainly isn't... What? Do you know of surrounding counties, like Hoover, Southern Jersey, Columbia? I know statewide, it's roughly 50/50, elected versus appointed. So it's just a different, you know, we have struggled to fill the position of assistant town clerk pretty consistently, and it's been a time of revolving door. Hopefully, we're stable with that position right now, but there, you know, so I'm not saying one is necessarily better than the other, but I think for a small town, to be sure you're gonna find somebody that's a competent town clerk, you know, it's not a guarantee, that's for sure.
But if a town clerk is appointed, that town clerk is not an autonomous person anymore, right? That town clerk answers to or to the town administration?
Well, I'm a town administrator, not a town administrator. Yes, that person would. But remember that the thing that regulates the action of the town clerk is state statute far more than the individual towns. I mean, Carol is beholden to state law far more than town law is, or anything else.
But that's state law and not town politics.
That is correct.
Just to look at it from that point of view.
Let someone speak, Chris. Okay. Just something that hasn't been enumerated before this group, and I'm not sure if it's clear or not. With regard to the charter revisions, we are not intending this to be an all or nothing kind of thing. We intend there to be six or seven different line items on the ballot in November, each of which encompasses the different concepts that we're bringing here. There are several different concepts that have been introduced, such as the budgetary thresholds, or the town clerk, or the minor ordinances. And all of these things are going to be put together as separate line items. So we don't have to vote yes or no on the entire thing. We're going to be able to vote these individual items up or down as you see fit. That's the first thing I wanted to mention. And my apologies for coming here and speaking extemporaneously, but this is just how it works. With regard to Carol and the town clerk's position, Carol was on, is on the Charter Revision Commission. And, and this is a matter of public record. If you've watched the videos or looked at the transcripts, you can see what I'm about to say here, which is that at the beginning of the process, she opposed the change to an appointed position. And as discussion and debate and various things were introduced, she actually changed her mind, and she endorses the idea of an appointed position right now, just for the record.
Well, she voted yes for it. We all say that she is in favor. She voted yes on the charter revision issue to move that forward.
Okay.
How she votes is her own issue. Scott chose.
First of all, my talk with Carol is she was, made it studiously, she's uncommitted about this. I mean, she told me that, she was not gonna make any, any points on that. I thought she wasn't gonna vote on that either, but I'm not sure if that happened or not. But the question I really wanted to ask, and it's probably for Bob, the process thing, do you guys realize that this document that you're looking at is not on the town website? I checked it in new today. I called the town clerk, the assistant clerk, and she emailed it to me, but...
Which law do you tell me?
The, the, okay, the change is from July 17th. The latest version you guys were working with, the July 8th one is on the website.
That is something that we have to discuss with the town clerk. It's the town clerk, who also in Bob's absence, was the chairperson of the Charter Revision Commission, had all the documents. All those documents were supposed to be submitted to the assistant, to the administrator, and they should have been up online. If they're not, I apologize, but it's in our office anyway.
But it all fits with the American...
It does. It's a good idea.
I just have a quick question, because I don't know if this would make it a win-win or not. Can the petition process be changed?
Can the petition process?
The petition process?
It can be if we voted back to the Charter Revision Commission.
Because I just thought, at least then, it would take care of people's anxiety about having to go get fifty signatures, which doesn't seem like a lot to you, but when's the last time you went out? Did you go to the door lock?
I know, I know the DTC, if they would like to get fifty signatures and addresses, all that's required, not yes or no, you get fifty signatures.
But my question is, and please...
PTA would get fifty signatures. The RTC can get fifty signatures. It's not monstrous pressure.
Go on, you say. But my question is, I'm trying to look at both sides here, am I helping? I'm trying to ask if the petition process is something that can be looked at and changed? And that way, you get to...
In our board meeting, in our board meeting, if we choose to push anything back to the Charter Revision Commission, yes, it can be potentially in there.
I have a question about that as well. Plus, I was reading all this stuff to be prepared for this meeting. My understanding, and maybe I missed it in one of the meetings, was that after, after the ordinance is agreed upon, the townspeople get a letter, and then they, they have twenty days, right, which I didn't actually get with this meeting today. And then they can send it back, saying, yeah, I don't like that, or whatever. So that in itself is not the petition process?
That is the petition.
So if seven hundred, or seven hundred people send those cards back and say no, then that's the petition process?
The way it works is there'll be a petition form in the town clerk's office or any organization to draw against. This gets to the town clerk's office, this letter. It takes seven days. The board of selectmen has a meeting, they vote on it, this mailer goes out from the town. It then gets mailed to our resident within the community. The town clerk's office gets one. The town clerk stamps their mail. You have twenty days from the date that the mail is received by the town clerk to get fifty signatures.
Oh.
Fifty signatures for twenty days, once it gets there, and then it goes immediately to referendum. It does not go into, it does not become implemented, nothing happens. It then goes to referendum.
Okay, that's a part I didn't understand. So I could see...
Anything I have on it?
Well, I mean, I've said it already, this is a dis... I think it's a serious problem. But this is, I want to just contrast with Bob, about the town clerk.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
The, Carol Lee did not commit to saying she was for the appointed position. I think she was uncommitted, okay? So she...
And I appreciate Jeff's clarification, and the, the way that he stated it was clear. She voted to advance the item further.
Where's the microphone? We got $20,000 to do a study, but we can't, we need another PA in this place, huh? They're required $10,000, so this is PA, so you know, like...
I'm Catherine Hutchinson, I live on Laker Hill Road, and I have allergies, so excuse me if I have to keep clearing my throat. I was going to address this last, but because it was the last topic before we got up here, I'll address it and maybe again refer to it at the end. As was just indicated, that if an ordinance is passed, then the town can repeal it by filing the appropriate petition to repeal. And it does require the fifty signatures at this point. And if that's the case, then the referendum is held. But I'm gonna read you from the ordinance itself. "The ordinance shall stand approved by the referendum unless a majority of the electors voting shall have voted in favor of repealing such ordinance, provided however that at least 10% of registered voters of the town shall have voted on the matter. Any ordinance not so repealed shall take effect the next day." Now, I read that to me, this one, roughly over close to $2,000. So even though the fifty signatures are obtained, approved by the, verified by the town clerk, goes to the board of selectmen, and they set the referendum. An affirmative vote to repeal at that town meeting, at that referendum, isn't enough and less, more than the 10% of the registered voters at that point have participated. So let's just take, for example, it's 220 is 10%, and there were 219 of us voting there, and we all vote to repeal. That ordinance would not be repealed.
Can I, one thing for you, research? Any referendum has to occur in the May or November election timeframe. No special referendum dates? No, no special dates?
So it's not immediate, which is what you said.
It's not immediate.
It said the next election will be the next referendum. But when it goes through the...
Right, and what Jeff was saying, there's no election, there's a budget referendum in May. There could be an ordinance that's attempted to be passed by the board of selectmen that the residents, the town residents, want to repeal. Fifty signatures goes to referendum, it would be on a budget vote or on the state election in November. No other town.
I understand. I use the term refer, vote on the referendum, because you know, which that the ordinance chooses.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would sit there and go, it's two, let's say it's 200. I don't think we've had less than 200 voters in one of these elections ever.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Budget?
Yes, we guess.
Oh, yeah.
Budget?
Yes, we guess.
Great, budget, we got the...
Now, you gotta show up. Now, you gotta show up.
My concern is, when people are anxious, they show up, right?
Right. Right.
All right, so I understand. I'm currently to speak about the portion of the proposed Charter Revision dealing with the town meeting, that is, the ordinance's adoption. Now, we all learned that during our first weeks class, somewhere along the line, that the three branches of government in the United States, the judicial, the elective, and the legislative branch. Here in, as you all know, the town meeting is our legislative branch. That's you and I. That's you and I and every electorate in this town. We're the legislative branch in this town. And we come to a town meeting, and where we present, we ask questions, we listen to what people have to say, and we have our say. And then we vote. And sometimes, hopefully, most of the time, it goes the way we vote. But if it doesn't, and we don't, it doesn't go the way we vote, it's still the process. It's still the process by which we all get a chance to participate, even though we all just don't win, so to speak. We live in town a long time. I think we do a pretty good job. I think we do a pretty good job here in the other. Now, there are times when maybe 25 people show up. But 25 people are 25 people out of, let's say, 22,000 or so electors that are privileged to be able to come to that meeting. But we had the opportunity. Maybe we chose not to because it wasn't something of interest to you and we declared one way or the other. But it's also been my experience to see so many people learn through the sound wave, the jet, the transfer, the town meeting to a larger facility. We all see that. So why shouldn't we give up? Why do we want to give up our right to have a say on the laws that are governing our town? And I said another go, as we started to discuss before. Again, to repeat, the revision that's proposed would take that right away from us. The proposed provision in the ordinance, the review, shall be reviewed. As we started out, or I started out, just not going to finish up with it. We called first, we said, no, the refiling of the, of the, um...
Then the...
...decision for the referendum.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, that's it. And the Board of Selectmen, as I said, are required to hold a special referendum, a special referendum. And I'm repeating myself, because this is what I was going to finish up with. I started with it. That means, as I said before, that one short of 10% of the electors, let's say 220, 219 was common vote. But we haven't got that 10% that that provision is going to stand and become the law the next day. Why don't we want to give up the right? It's very, very important right. That's what I...
Jeff Baldwin.
Heard a lot of good things tonight, and I agree. I do not want to give up my power and my choice of voting and expressing my opinion. I don't want someone making it for me. I don't want things decided for me. I'm very in favor of town meetings and referendums. Some of you, I think, know that I went door to door, got 130 signatures to have a study done about regionalization. Well, little did I know, it wasn't an official petition. And so it was denied, and never went anywhere, and I wasted my time. I never want to have to go through that again. And I think it's unfair to say, oh, 50 signatures. No, I'm very much opposed to that. And I'm not sure how I feel about elected or appointed Carol Lee. I'd like to see appointed, you know, I'd like to see promoted within locally. That can't happen, I guess, at this point. Or to have someone from town brought up through the ranks and qualified and tutored and assisted. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Being as Eric questioned there, for the rest of the word. In the last four years, how many minor ordinancees have been passed?
Well, what is the definition of a minor ordinance?
We don't have a definition.
There goes a definition, but it's not very good. It's in the charter.
I think that's all.
It's right in there. Take a look.
Everything that we voted, we've gone to town meeting.
About four. Four, maybe five.
Well...
Where's him?
Hi, I'm Leanne Hutchinson on Bunker Hill Road. I'm not going to bring up anything new, because everything that I wanted to state has been covered. I just want to say that I have followed the process. I've attended several of the Charter Review Zoom meeting meetings. I've spoken during public speak, and I've read up on all the minutes of meetings I was able to attend. And I want to express my agreement with some of the points that have been brought up tonight, including not taking any legislative power away from the town meeting. I think people who get themselves quote unquote "to a town meeting" deserve the attention that that brings. I've been to town meetings where things went my way and other times where I didn't agree with the final result. But at least it's the New England Democratic format that people have fought and died so that we can show up and express our opinion. I also don't agree with the process, what I consider a long process proposed for repealing an ordinance. I think it's cumbersome to wait until the next referendum. And I also just want to also express my opinion that having followed this process from the beginning, I'm not completely sure how it originated in the first place. I just don't think it's necessary the way it's proposed. So those, I just wanted to say for the record that those are the main points that have already been stated that I agree with. Thanks.
All right. So this document has an awful lot of changes proposed in it. And I just want to talk a little bit about, because what I don't want to see is everybody thrown out, because everybody's pissed about a couple portions of this. So number one, the state several years ago pretty much required all the towns to go to elections in the fall and over, for many years, had spring elections. We no longer do. There's a very cumbersome process to get back to the possibility of May elections, which I don't think we as a town want to go through. So we ought to, we ought to make the charter change to officially codify that elections will be in November, because our charter says one thing and state law says another thing. So we should change that section in the charter, which is Section 203, general elections. You can make a decision whether or not the town clerk position is included in that. That's either here nor there. So that makes sense. The second thing is Section 210, which covers early voting. Again, that is state law. We are simply making the charter in that section match what state law is. And that state law now says early voting is a thing. So regardless of whether we have it in our charter or not, we're obligated to do it. So we might as well make our charter consistent. As far as the town budget meeting goes, I think the, the goal there really was to drive voter participation at the referendum. Because the reality is, we have usually two budget votes a week apart, one for RAM, one for the town budget. We typically get, what, a little less than 5% of the electorate votes on the RAM budget. So 5% of the taxpayers vote on 40% of the town spending. It's ridiculous. By combining those two together and having one vote, at least initially, that covers both budgets, I think the goal is to get more people out to vote, you know, so we get a higher turnout and it's more representative of what people actually want. So I think that, to me, is a worthwhile thing to consider. The second thing is, right now, there's no lower limit on leases, you know, at which it doesn't have to go to town meeting. Okay? So that means the $200 a year lease for the thing in the town clerk's office that runs the postage through the media, that technically has to go to town meeting. And there are lots and lots of things like that. Now, I mean, if you look at it objectively, there's 20 or 30 things that either us as a town or the Board of Education would have to go to town meeting for because we have no lower threshold on that. So that's frankly dumb, because, you know, there's, that's just too many things. I don't think most of you really care, you know, that we're spending a couple hundred dollars a year to lease the postage machine. At least I would hope you don't, you consider that a normal cost of business. So you threat, set that threshold high enough so that when we go to buy something expensive or lease something expensive, like a plow truck or something of that nature, that you all get to say and weigh in on it. And you leave the little stuff to the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen to approve. So in my opinion, that makes sense to allow that, that change in the charter to go through. So that is Section 304E under leases. And the other one is grants. So how many of you here have had a hand in writing one of the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving Grants? Any of you go to town meeting to accept that? You go to town meeting, do you accept that? Did you? No, we didn't. Because practically, there's too many little grants that run through this town. And that's all funding that we get from the state that we use to lower taxes and get things done in the town. So going to public meeting for a big grant, absolutely appropriate. If we're going to spend, you know, a big chunk of your tax dollars, absolutely. That should go to town meeting. You should absolutely have a say in it. But the little stuff, I mean, you know, the, the Old Cemetery Association, pretty much every year, they go for a grant for maintaining the headstones. Well, so, but the town also budgets money in that line item. So technically, every single year, we should be going to town meeting for that. And there are many things in that category. So I would urge you to pass that, just as a reasonable governance change.
What number is that?
Uh, that is 304G, which is participation in any federal, state, or private grant program. So that one, I think, is worth the town pursuing. Obviously, some of these other things are controversial. The other one is administrative positions. So currently, under Section 702D and E, those are two positions that the town right now doesn't exactly line up with the charter. In the case of the Director of Health, it says, "We shall appoint the Director of Health as mandated by the state of Connecticut." Well, in that, that person is a part-time employee. Well, we're part of a regional health organization. We're part of Eastern Highlands Health District. I'm on the Board of Directors of that. I'm also on the Executive Board of that organization. So that's a shared service that we are part of. But they're not town employees. So our charter does not match what we actually do. So I would urge you to accept Section 702 for administrative positions.
Excuse me, how, how would you go about that then? If we're regional and we're part of Eastern Health, how do you change that to the Board of Selectmen appoint the Director of Health? Because that's...
Because all the Board of Selectmen just ratifies the fact that we use Eastern Highlands Health District. The only thing you're striking, we're not adding anything. We're basically striking the fact that it says the Director of Health is employed part-time in the town, because he is not a town employee. He's an employee of Eastern Highlands Health District.
But we don't appoint them either. I mean, should that, I guess my question is, should we be restating that entire? Because we don't apply, we don't employ them. I don't think that we've ever actually...
Followed our charter. So we voted, we voted years ago to join Eastern Highlands Health District when they were expanding. And we've been a part of that organization ever since.
Right.
We pay into it. We're a part of the governing body of that. And we get a lot of really good service, both us and the school. So to me, that makes sense. The second thing is animal control officer. Currently, we use NICAG, which is the Northeast Council of Government's Animal Control Services to cover the town, as opposed to having our own. And there's two parts to that. The first is the state changed the laws several years ago regarding animal control facilities and the cost to take our, what was our animal control facility and make it meet state law is really expensive. So we don't really have any intention of going back to having our own animal control officer and own animal control facility. You know, technically today, animal control facilities have to be air-conditioned. They have an awful lot of standards that we frankly can't meet without building a standalone facility for that. So by changing that, this, the charter says that we're going to have our own officer. All this charter change does is allow us to use a shared service for that. So I think you should pass that. I think that's reasonable, and that matches what we actually do for governance. And then the changes to the way the budget runs, just what I want to say right now is our charter currently calls that out kind of two different ways. So obviously, the Board of Finance has final authority for the budget that goes to the public. But what happens is, prior to the start of the budget process, each department head gets, submits a budget. Each department head, each Board and Commission submits a budget to the town, to both myself and the Finance Director. They all get collated into a budget and then gets reviewed. That gets passed out to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. So most of what's in here is what we're actually doing now is actually the way the process works. For the most part, the Board of Finance is not doing what they used to do, which is they used to hear from each individual department themselves, and they collated the budget and came up with the final budget. So with, with the switch to a town administrator, part of that role has shifted to myself and who we have for a Finance Director. So that's, to me, that makes sense, but maybe it doesn't make sense to you. And that's pretty much all I have in terms of what I wanted to say. So what I would say is just, please don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. There are sections here you may be incredibly opposed to, and that's fine. But there's a bunch of things that are just governance changes that make sense to be adopted. So that's it. Thanks.
Could I ask a question about a $50,000 lease option, like, why?
Sure.
That's, that's, that's like, I can't, we don't have, there's no, there's still a lease, but $20,000, I don't know, would be a high, what would be an example of that?
What age are we talking about?
304E.
A five-year piece of equipment from Public Works, a small piece of equipment from Public Works. Then being leased over a five-year term would represent a $50,000 item that still has to go to budget. And you have to realize that that $50,000 is if we call, we, we, we would have to call, and just like we did with the mower that just went up in front of town meeting, we would have to call a special town meeting to have a vote on a piece of equipment that would be $50,000. And right now, I think Eric puts it, $5,000 or $2,000?
Uh, there's actually no limit, right?
There's no limit. So anyways, so it, it's, it's not, it's not something that's included in the normal budget because you would get to vote on that, you know, at referendum, be able to speak about it. It's if we, if the Board of Selectmen called a special meeting on a lease that they wanted to enact, that's outside the budget for $50,000. Technically, it's not really gonna occur very often, but it's just setting a different threshold.
So, just, Drew, can...
Marcy, we're... I just have a question from Marcy Minor, West Street. What is the process for when the town clerk wants to leave her position? Or, say, we hire a new one and find that maybe the townspeople aren't happy with the new person? What would be the process of that person going?
Well, right now, we can't, because the town clerk is a rank official, and the town clerk is statutorily required, you know, has rules, there are rules. The local government can't just go after the town clerk and ask the town clerk to leave. The town clerk could resign, and that's a full-on issue I don't, I don't wanna deal with. Please, please let him go before that happens. Because I don't know what we would do in here. Do we have to have such a...
All open.
We'd have a special election, and then anyone in town who the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee approve would run off for the town clerk's position. That's what we had.
And that, that would be challenging.
And Jeff, that's whether they're qualified or not.
And that's whether they're qualified or not.
That's just a political arena, there's no qualifications to that.
I mean, listen, the town clerk's position, for everybody that's going, it is no different than what we did with the town administrator in replacing the first electments, you know, administrative authority. Because you can never be guaranteed that the person sitting in the first electments chair has the capabilities to do that job effectively for the town's residents. That's why you need to do that. So you all voted for that. There's no difference in the town clerk's position than the town administrator's.
Right.
That's it.
Not necessarily.
You can sit there and say you want somebody to vote for it, but Catherine, think of the Democratic Town Committee. Who are you putting up for that job that's qualified to do that job effectively for the residents and the town area? Not the 50 people that are here at this meeting, but the other 2,500 residents that are beginning to town clerk services. Who is the Democratic Town Committee putting up for that job? You got any ideas?
Here's my question, though, this is, to answer that, is you're talking a political versus profession. So that's what I had asked, or what I had said before when someone was saying something that currently, she is an elected physician, but she has an autonomy there because she doesn't answer directly to the town administrator or anyone else. If I, if you now appoint her, if you now hire someone, that person, of course, has no autonomy. That person is gonna have to, politically speaking, I'm just, professionally, it's different. But the town, little town politics is little town politics, and that's not gonna change. So that position is no longer autonomous. That position is now going to be involved in the political process of the town administrator.
Eric Anderson, on one side, Eric Anderson's position is a political position, right? It's, it's appointed by the Board every year, every two years, not even four years, every two years. We have to renew Eric's contract. This Board could sit there and say, "They want Eric out."
Right.
Right? And we could, we could vote him out and then have to hire a, politically do it, a new line. Who wants to go through this? Eric, don't have a... Right? You're doing a great job, Thomas.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we're not talking about Carol, we're talking about the town clerk. Carol's not gonna, you know, she's not gonna wanna be the town clerk forever, but now they have another new person. And I feel like we've gotten lucky having Carol, and we might not get lucky having someone in town that is like her.
Right, I could reason to say, I was gonna say the same thing. I feel like, you know, we had some positions in the town office that were very difficult to fill. We hired people that didn't work out. If they were elected, we would have had a jim-dandy of a time getting rid of them. When the person is appointed, there's qualifications and expectations that come along that they have to meet, that if they don't meet them, we can move on to the correct person in the job. And you gotta take Carol Lee out of it. You gotta look at the position and what's best to move the town forward and keep things going. The new town clerk, whoever he or she may be, has state regulations and laws that they will have to adhere to, as Eric had mentioned. But they should be an appointed position and not an elected political position based on qualifications. Correct?
Is there anyone who has not spoken and would like to speak one time? And Louise, is there anyone else that has not spoken at much talk? Eric, you're up. Louise, it's gonna go next. Anybody else I want on the record right now? Anybody? Anybody? All right, Louise, you get the last word, all right?
Eric Shavchenko, 23th Old Road, July. Still Eric Shavchenko. And I still don't remember though. I served on the Ram Board of Ed. And one of our most difficult assignments was to hire a new superintendent at school. That is a big, big position. It's huge for the future of that school. We have, we had a board of 11 people, and we spent literally months working on this issue. Getting it down from 11 terrific applicants to six. And now how are we gonna get it to three? And now how are we gonna get it to a point where we can have a vote on this, right? So the effort that we put into that, to, to select the best possible candidate, is a, a great multiple on what would happen if it was simply a vote. If a bunch of people just applied and there was a list to vote, how are people gonna know who the most qualified person is, right? So, you know, so with, people on boards, our wonderful board here that works hard for us, we have a, we have a democratic vote, I agree with that, right? But when you're, when you're hiring a professional, and it seems to me that Carol Lee is a professional, that we need to have a group of people look deeply into the people who are applying for this job and, and use their collective judgment in selecting the best person. And so you say, well, how, why did I get that? Why, why did I deserve that responsibility? It's because you put me there. That's how it works. So, you know, I, I'm just trying to speak in, in support of appointing a person here where you're able to look deeply into who is applied and, and have a, a good group of people make a selection on behalf of the townspeople who voted them into that position to do that. Thank you.
You stood when, like, said John, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I, I'd like everybody to know we have another quick meeting after this.
Oh, yeah.
Can you...
Can you adjourn?
We're adjourned in the public hearing, everybody voting? This is the company, vote.
Present, honor.
First, agenda, the first night was called to order, which I'm doing. Second night was public speaking. Anyone? I'm gonna go real quick, everyone? Don't you think? Okay. Three, discussion and possible action on the draft charter report. So what I would like to do is, I'll, I'll, I'll go first for the Board of Selectmen. I was also on the Charter Revision Commission, and I just wanna express what was done so everybody understands. The majority of these items that are done were not what I wanted done. I, I had a different agenda, knowing that we needed to move the Charter Revision Committee to get out of November election ballot so that we have the majority of the town residents to come and would vote, yes or no? Because in my mind, when we do these types of things, it's, it's appropriate to go to referendum and to have the greatest number of residents that can vote on a subject that's gonna impact the entire town. It's very important, because the town meeting, while it's great, it's 50 people who really do, and I agree with Mr. and Mrs. Hutchinson, and, and when she says, "Those are the people who are committed to come to the town meetings." But we have a town of 2,500 residents and voters that we sit there and have to improve. Now, what I want, what I wanted done was a town council form of government. The Charter Revision Committee chose not to take that up, which I was, I'm okay with. I do believe there would be better form of governing the town where you take a seven-member board, combine the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, and you allow one board, who hopefully you get seven good committed people to sit there and deal with the finances and the, the direction of the community. That's what I wanted to do. That got taken off the table. Now, what we did, and what happened is, as Eric well-positioned these, these, like, and these would be the questions on the ballot that would go in some areas. I'm not detail, I'm just giving you generalizations. November elections, makes sense, you know? We need to be in November elections. The town clerk moving from elective to elective, makes sense. We could vote yes or no on that. Ordinances, slightly more confrontational, more, but it's giving the board that you elected the position within town to create ordinances. And then we worked as a committee and bent over backwards to try to make the petitioning process as easy as possible for, for the residents. And we, we didn't, you know, the whole goal ended up being efficiency so that we wouldn't redo things, we wouldn't call out community members to come to meetings over and over and over again. Because we, as a board, could sit there and say, "We want a special meeting all the time, and we're dragging you out all the time." That's not what we want. You guys don't wanna come to these meetings all the time. So we attempted, we were attempting to try to get this to push into a referendum at the two major elections. Now, one thing I would agree with Mrs. Hutchinson, the older Mrs. Hutchinson. 10%, I can, I can live with taking that out. I can tell the rest of the board, I can live with taking 10% out of the elected number because you should always have more than 10% because we're consolidating the budget votes. That's what also, one of the functional things we do is consolidating the budget votes so that both budgets are going on at the same time. You should get more than 200 people at that election. But if you don't, and there's a, there's an ordinance on it, fine, up or down 50%, yes or no, I get it. So I would agree with that, that point. The financial thresholds, which is the, the other item, we're running them in the town with a, an operating budget of two, two, $4 million. And if you look at the town, it's $4 million for the town, $4 million for AES, and $4 million for RAM. The thresholds are extremely low, and they call for town meetings to be called when we don't hit those thresholds. So we're just bumping them up slightly, right? We're not taking any of the financial issues away from the town meeting. Still have a town meeting. The only thing that we're dealing with is, as soon as the town meeting is over and the town meeting votes to either lower a line or the total budget, that budget goes right to referendum for the rest of the community to vote on. So that was that far. And then there's just minor language issues, as Eric was talking about, that are in the charter that really need to be fixed. So that's why, that's why it was done, why the Charter Revision Commission did it. And I'll actually tell you that that was the first Charter Revision Commission I was on. I thought it was incredibly well-run, Bob Hamburg did a great job, Carol Lee was on. So anyone who sits there and says that the town clerk issue didn't get addressed by the town clerk, she may not vote for it, but that's what we do to these processes, to give an opportunity for yes or no, just like the last Charter Revision. I wasn't able to vote, I lost. I didn't want the bifurcation of the budget because I think it creates, it creates problems within the community. It's us versus them, the Board of Education. I didn't want that. And I even voted to send it to referendum, because that's what it's about. You send things to referendum, you let the community vote on it. So if the community of Anor wants to vote and votes on a bifurcation of the budget, then so be it. Wasn't what I meant. And that's how I think these things should work. I just think it should go forward and, and be done. And, and you wanna vote no on a topic, vote no. You wanna go on a campaign, vote no on a topic, go out and campaign for it. I'm okay with it, and I'll live with the result. But I think it's being done for efficiency. This whole power rep thing, do you think anyone on this board is up here because they have power? None of us work for this community. None of us sit there and get paid. None of us sit there and get a foray of unhearing power for something overall in this town. Let me tell you, that was ended when Eric stepped into the town administration position. So as far as I'm concerned, it's about efficiency and it's about giving the most voice out of the most people so that they can vote things up or down appropriately. Next, Jeff, you want to?
Just, just to mention the ordinances. I mean, the only ordinance we pass are ordinances that we get emails about and suggestions to do. Like, one of the things we're working on right now is the dog issue with the ball fans. People are running their dog, and the dogs are defecating on the ball fans. And people are emailing us wanting an ordinance, you know, something with teeth that we can go after these dog owners that are letting their dogs run on the ball field. So we're not gonna propose anything that's, people don't want. And we're proposing what people email us and tell us what they wanna do. Those are the things that we're trying to do, so.
My thought, I've been listening to everybody today, is that I can see the ordinances going to referendum, but I would think maybe we should have, if we wanna perform a, for this, anything for the six months up to a, of election or a, you know, referendum, we send them all to that referendum and have the townspeople go on all of them instead of having to go through this petition, right? That's my...
Scott?
All these things that we've been talking about tonight are all things that we've threw, you know, since we've been on the boards and the boards previous to this. All these are problems that we've come up with over the years that are finally getting straightened out. So that, that's why they're up. It's not some conspiracy, it's nothing to hurt anybody. Nobody here wants that. We all straighten things out to make the town move smoothly. That's all going on here. And I think they did a good job of it. It's a lot of, you know, up and down, you gotta figure it all out. But we all did it for the betterment of the town.
Paul?
I think you all said what I was thinking. Actually, Jeff Murray brought a good point about the ordinance, because we, you know, we're, we're reading the Facebook posts, we're, we're reading the emails, we're, we're listening to our neighbors. We live in town too, so we, we don't wanna pass something that's gonna, you know, affect us negatively too. So I think Jeff just really summed it up.
I mean, we've gone to meetings, people have told us, you know, like, the thing about the ball fans. We've seen the Facebook posts, we've seen the emails, and it's just, people want us to do something. That's what we're gonna do. I mean, we haven't heard anything that people wanna run their dogs on the ball field. It's just that people are letting their dogs just run a while down there. It's just that people are letting their dogs just run wild down there, it's...
I'm down there every day, getting people off that ball field. Every day. And it's the same people all the time, with eight signs around the field.
Yep, all we wanna do is get some teeth to put the minor ordinances, find, define the seizure for people doing, you know, going against the ordinance and bringing their dogs on the ball field. We got kids playing, we, we want our kids running in, bowls of dog.
In, in this case, there will be no minor or major ordinance, it'll just be an ordinance. That's all we're trying to get to at this point, is what an ordinance is for. And I honestly believe that we went well outside of the normal scope of trying to allow people to petition for an ordinance to sit there and get that ordinance on a ballot. So, I, I just sit there and I go, the petition process is in place? And I'm sorry, I, maybe I'm just, it's 50 signatures. If I felt strongly that a future board's selection did something that I absolutely disagree with, I would be going to every one of you in this room and I would be saying, please sign this paper so it can go on the ballot. And it, it's not, it's not that hard, I'm sorry. Even if I don't wanna vote yes or no, it can go on the ballot. And you could do that with every ordinance we put forward. You could get 50 signatures and it's gonna go on the ballot. Unless you believe that, hey, it's a reasonably good ordinance.
Can I, can I ask a question? So, these are out, this is the answer. How many board members were on that committee?
I was the only one.
Okay. So the rest of the committee talked about the petition process and felt like it was a good thing to move forward tonight, I'm just stating the obvious.
They all voted for it, I mean, and, and what we did is, and Shannon listened to that one meeting, because I was the one in, in charge of the ordinance section, I guess. Though every other member had a different section. It wasn't like we sat there and Jeff McGuire drove the entire issue. It was, everybody had an issue. Somebody had, you know, the November election, somebody had the town clerk, somebody had the financial ramifications of the thing. And each member, he did a, he did a really good job, did a very good job to put it. My job was to sit there going, I went with everybody who had an issue as to, okay, if we do a petition, how would it work? And we extended the petition from 20 days to 45 days, to 20 days within the 45 days until the mailer was received by the entire community outlining the ordinance. We were incredibly detailed and, and to be really honest, Tom Chalmers said I was crazy. Cause he's like, it's only 20 days. I said, no, I said, it's the process, that everybody has a chance to sit there and get 50 signatures. You can't get 50 signatures in 20 days, I'm sorry, our, our democracy is dumb. So.
Just, I was looking here, 301, it says the, um, so when you've announced it to the authority to approve and enact, repeal and modify all the ordinances after your public hearing, and also those powers and we're gonna conform to. So, we would discuss an ordinance and then post it, we're having a public hearing the next month, so that people can come and express their opinion. So you know whether or not it's gonna be a no for most people or possible, okay.
That's pretty much required by state law, that you have a public hearing before you enact an ordinance. You could probably do it in a charter and get rid of the public hearing, and nobody does. Everybody does.
And Anne, just so you're clear, and everybody else is clear. We do that. The ordinance does not take effect to 45 days. So the way I envision this is, the board of selectmen has a meeting, that's 30 days later, we have a second meeting. So we're gonna get feedback from the public hearing, we're gonna get feedback at our second board of select meeting. We don't have to put anything up, the board of selectmen can say no at any time to any ordinance that it wants. And the board of selectmen has the authority to repeal any ordinance at any time. It, it's not as if we're taking anything away from the public. People elected us to do a job. We're sitting there trying to do the best job that we can, and then if you don't like what we're doing, well, you've voted out. But if you don't like what we're doing on an ordinance, you get 20, 50 signatures, it goes on the ballot the entire time. It's simple, I'm just breaking it down simply, but that's what this is about, so.
And the interim doesn't go into effect.
Yeah, it does not go into effect.
And I believe, um, somebody said they got signatures that didn't count. There's a special form you have to get from the town clerk, is that correct?
That's right, the town clerk has the, the...
They have to have a special form and make sure it's all in the details.
And we talked about that within the mailer that needs to go up to the community to sit there and have on the mailer explanations of the petitioning process and what they need to do. Petition, a valid petition would be in the town clerk's office. It needs to be sat there and set up, and you go forward and do it, but I'm sorry, 50 signatures. I, I mean, I'm, it's just me, but 50 signatures. Exactly, you'll get, you'll get...
You can send that to the transfer station, and you can give 50 signatures and, uh, register voters.
So, anyway, so.
Yeah, right.
So, um, so anyway, anybody else on the board of selectmen want to talk about any of the specific issues that were raised?
I, I have a, I have a question, but...
Good, that's good.
So, I think it was brought up tonight that there was a section missing.
There are sections deleted all over the place in that chart.
Right, so I guess my general question is, could we want to move forward with this? And we, we need to fix, if we decide to fix that, how do we handle that?
Well, the only thing that we would be doing tonight is voting on the draft from the charter, you know, committee. And then what would happen is, we would then create questions that would have to be submitted to Secretary of State's office, that would go on the ballot, so it'd be yes or no. So everybody would have the right to vote yes or vote no on any specific topic that is addressed. There'll probably be the six or seven that would end up being on the charter. Like, the ordinance one would be wanted. You don't want the ordinance one to go into effect, you vote no. If you want November elections to be there, you vote yes. I mean, you know, but...
A board of orders that you, you don't have to vote on that. Exactly, you make a change, he doesn't understand.
We can sit there and refer anything back to the charter revision commission if we choose to.
Yep.
So, that's what the board has the power to do. We either have the power to accept it in its entirety or push a portion of it back to the charter revision commission, because we believe it's a good idea.
If you do that, you'll have to do it pretty soon, if you wanna make the deadline in order to get it on the ballot. But you can't, you have enough time. Cause you would have to get, I would say, your next meeting, I believe on the 11th, your next regular meeting, you would have to do that at that meeting. Have a, a joint meeting with the charter revision commission and discuss your differences, because this is their proposal.
Do we have to have, well, like, let's do the logistics. So let's sit there and say, Mrs. Hutchinson, 10% we don't approve. What do we need to do?
You would have to meet with the charter revision commission at your next, invite them to your next board of, selectmen meeting, have a joint meeting with them, and try to come to an agreement on that. And that probably wouldn't be too difficult. But, uh, you know, if you, if that's the only question you have, it won't be too difficult at all, I don't think.
So we would like to have a special charter revision commission before the board's selection?
No, you could be, did that way last time, two, two years ago.
All right.
Same thing, same process.
No requirement to come back to this group and do this all over again?
No.
Then, then...
The law only requires an un-public hearing with the board of selectmen.
All right, then, then I would like to make a motion to, um, accept all, the charter, the draft report in its entirety, with the exception of eliminating the 10% voting requirement for, um, referendums. I'm sorry, I'm a... Discussion on anything else? All right, all those in favor? I think, all right. So, just so everybody here understands, the questions will be drafted. Right, after we get back with the charter revision commission on the 10%. Questions will be drafted, they'll be available for everybody to understand, and then you can campaign, yes or no, up or down, related to all these items.
Will they put them on the website?
They will.
They'll be ready before the meeting on the 11th. They'll be ready.
Now what about the definition of minor versus not just ordinance? You can write down there's...
We may, we may change that, you know, courts put one of the sections that will be minor language changes, because that'll be an up or down. And those minor language changes will be a little bit more detailed that you probably...
Well, that impacts, that, that section impacts the, uh, the issue of the ord, uh, of how we do ordinances, so it is included in that. We, we said something about that, Catherine, and it's gone. I realized, I'm, I'm as obsessive compulsive as anybody, believe me. And I realized that that's a definition section. It's no longer a definition, that minor ordinance is taken out of there. That's, but, but to insist that it, that it not stay there the way it's written is being overly obsessive compulsive. Because sooner or later, that will disappear from the charter, and it will only be a matter of history. All, the town clerk's office has every charter that's ever been done in there. You could, the history, it's important to preserve the history. But I, I think the best way to address that issue of minor ordinances is the way it is written. Even though it's not a definition anymore, it was, it's just been removed. So it's telling you what's being done with it.
So you're saying it'll just say, wherever it says minor, we'll just say ordinance?
That's right.
Okay.
There'll be, because the question, Catherine, of deciding what is a minor ordinance and what is not, what it comes down to is so generally stated, that it comes down to me, because I'm the town attorney, and I say, okay, I think it's minor, all right? I'd rather not do that. Uh, I'd rather just have ordinances and have them all acted on the same as any other ordinance.
It usually comes down to money, fines.
I mean, there are some that are obviously, uh, minor, but sometimes it's a false call.
Uh, anyone else have anything before we move on? Okay, so we're gonna move on to item four, public speak. Anyone else? Excuse me?
Did you take your microphone?
We need a spot, no? Marson?
Uh, one thing, uh, is, I gotta admit that the, um, the thought of getting signatures, even at the city, it may seem like it's not a lot, but I'm sitting here thinking, if I gotta get 50 signatures, that's gonna take a lot, cause I could take an hour and talk to four people. You know, so if there's a way to make that easier, maybe even online, an online, you know, uh, something on the website, I don't know, question, I don't, just something that's easier.
Understood. Julia?
Um, Eric, I've talked about, um, certain items. Imagine sections 304G, that's certain, 23, to use the term, least of all governance. Seem to make a lot of sense to me, that the kind of thing he was talking about, should be included in whatever you come back again for voting on.
Yes, sir. Good.
And we all know that it makes sense.
So, so just so you understand, you want my questions?
I was a little hard, but you mentioned...
You want my questions written in such a way to promote what Eric told us?
Well, and some of the things what he suggested, yes.
They're all in here.
All right. Yeah, that's right.
The question will be written in more general terms, but we'll make sure that, Julia, that it encompasses all of those, all of those issues about thresholds.
Sharon?
Yeah, it's not good. You're gonna be, talk to the committee card.
Shannon?
Well, Scott, I pointed out the commission, just a bunch of things, minor changes, as you said, that need to be made to make the charter, um...
Flow back.
Well, not just that, comport with its actual language, it refers to, um, provisions that don't exist anymore and whatnot. How might those be addressed? Would they be put to a question, or it probably would be better if the board of selectmen, pa, I don't know, passing on those, so that they don't even have to be addressed, it's...
If their best benefit can be handled, uh...
By the board of selectmen, right?
Yeah.
Okay, wait, we'll see, I'll tell you about those, right?
Sharon, in my mind, there's, there's one question that's a minor language question.
Yeah.
And that would fall in under the minor.
Thank you.
Um, just, I can't speak for Don Delane, I certainly don't want to. But from my perspective, power grab was not individual, it was an institutional thing. It's saying that the board of selectmen, as an institution, is taking authority that is now with town meeting. Not, it's not meant at all personally to anyone.
All right, tell me your person.
I know, I mean, me too.
I, I would just like to comment that the term minor ordinance that was used initially, it would appear that that was an intention not to include all ordinances. The removal of the word minor will not include all ordinances.
Thank you. Anyone else? Fire. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? I am. All right, thank you very much.